Okay. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks for the pause.
Good.
Yep.
So our main like first thing of business that we have from the utility department, it is that time of the year, leaflet pickup will begin on November third, which is a Monday. And we'll be doing it every Monday and Friday, same schedule as last year until, well, hopefully there's no more leaves. Uh, a major announcement that was not made by us, which is uh Trees Mobile Home Community has elected not to be serviced this year. So for the residents that live there, that's.
They have their own.
Okay.
Procedure going on, so.
For the leaves?
Uh huh. They're supposed to be, they're gonna be required to bag them and they'll pick them up weekly. Okay.
Um, we had an invoice come in from B and H, the uh lift station there on Eastern Avenue now has two functional pumps in it again. It is installed and it has been running perfectly.
Good.
No issues out of it. Yeah. There's wood up here on these. Another thing that we also have that B and H helped out with is that last month they fixed well pump six and service pump two at the well field. And both of those have been running without a hitch as well, so. We're good on that fronts right now. Uh, something we talked about last week or last month, we were talking about blind bids on the Tonka that we have in town that's a roller, uh, two pressurized water tanks and then a old farmer scale. We are still gathering information on those. I got all the pictures right now, but we're wanting to just get all the details ironed out and everything. That should be online to like view and look over here next couple of weeks. Some big news that we have, we have an EQ basin out at the wastewater treatment plant. It is essentially there to catch all the extra water that comes in. And so the uh clarifiers don't overflow. We've successfully gotten that pump down recently for, to be honest, first time that I've seen. But we also discovered at the bottom that it needs to be cleaned as most everything does out there. I actually uh got in contact with Tommy Burns of the summon fire department. And we are looking at a tentative time of like the first week of November for them to bring out a new uh pressure tent. It's a water tank that they are getting and they are going to try it out and pretty much do training and everything with the pump out there and help us out at the same time and work all that out. Cause it is a sixty foot by twenty foot hole and uh I don't think we're getting down in there. Uh, some other stuff with the EQ basin that we are working on right now, I'm in the process of getting quotes for an offload for the, I have timer on it, cause right now it's set to, it pumps three hours in the middle of the night. But if it empties, we don't want to burn up. It usually runs from one AM to four AM whenever we have like sewage traffic. We actually have a big shout out this month. Tom Dudley came out and deep tilled both the baseball fields for us and that was a huge tilt. And then some of the other stuff that we have is we're still working on getting a plow, soft box and all those options, but that is, it is getting worked on is the best way to put it. The sewer extension project, it is ninety nine point nine percent done. It should have already been online, but we've had some hiccups with the pumps or whatever and it is here very soon. Uh, other than that, we just have some of our to do's that we're planning on having done here in the next month, which is we're gonna prep the walls at the wastewater treatment plant for paint.
Uh, we actually have Joe Mann's crew coming out on October twenty fifth to paint that.
Okay.
That chemical room for you.
Okay. Uh, one thing that we've had a continuation of unfortunately is we are still unable to reach hot seventeen, it's a meter.
Yeah.
It is.
I'm gonna talk to John about sending a letter for that.
Okay, but I was just gonna mention that because we originally sent out a letter on eight twenty of twenty five. So getting close to two months ago, I don't think we've heard back yet, have we Cheryl?
No.
No. Other than that, I think that's.
Can I?
All we got.
May I point out one thing? Did you say out loud about the eastern lift station rail system?
Oh, yes, 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 yeah.
I was hoping you would show maybe before you guys leave for the night, just show Randy those pictures.
Yes, I can have those pictures printed off and everything.
Okay.
During the installation of the second pump in the eastern lift station, we noted that the rail system that is in there for the pumps is starting to come out of the wall.
It looks corroded.
It looks very much corroded and it is something that should be fixed sooner rather than later because that railing system goes down, that lift station goes down.
Yeah, I got a couple of people you can call and get quotes on that. Um, how did your phosphorus removal trial, how'd that go for you?
It went well. We are extremely optimistic. It's been completed for about two weeks now. It is, we got it within testing standards. Our only worry is the amount of chemicals we had to use, but that is, it gets all taken out anyways.
And I think those numbers are all the data's being sent for the compliance plan to Lori and I can't remember who the other engineer's name, what's his name?
I've seen it.
Mm-hmm.
Lee?
Lee, that's it.
These are Lee and then I don't know the other gentleman's.
So that should be close to finish, the phosphorus removal. No, I mean the actual plan, the red document.
Oh.
I think it's close.
I have no idea.
Hopefully we will have it by November.
Uh, we also decided to include something new at the very bottom of the tenure report this year. There is a wishlist that we can hopefully work on stuff for the rest of the year or the beginning of next year. It's just little things that we've noticed, things that can make life easier and just goals and stuff that we have.
I don't think you listed them in the order of what.
No, they are just thrown in there. They have no order of.
That auto sampler, I think it is with only three people and some people on, I think that should be at the top of the list.
From what I've talked with Jason about with that, it essentially is, it runs where effluent is, it collects a sample for you. If you cannot make it out there, it actually has a refrigerator stored to it and it keeps them cool. So that'll also help, like it's kinda hard whenever you're out mowing a field somewhere. Also, you're like, oh crap, I gotta go get a sample. So now that we.
Okay.
Real big help.
Alrighty. You think we can work on that for the next meeting maybe? It'll have to be installed now, I'm talking to the council, maybe bring a quote to him for it?
Yeah.
It's not a high, high dollar thing.
No, I can actually, next meeting if we want, we have our physical copies of our blue books out there. I can bring in all that are listed in that. It has the price, it has the item number and it has everything associated.
And we just need to find out what it takes to install.
And I believe that with the installation, Jason will be able to help because he has it at other plants.
Okay.
Okay. Get us some.
Anything else?
Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Connor.
Thank you. Next is the clerk.
I'm gonna go fast, I promise. I see none of you have your computer, so did you guys, were you able to go over your packet? Okay, I have your meet, the meeting minutes. From the nine eighteen regular meeting. APV, these numbers are inflated because of the money that we have going out being reimbursed for the sewer projects, so it's two hundred and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty one cents. And some major repairs at the wastewater plant. We have um we have some adjustments um for a spigot leak. It was a confirmed leak by a plumber, two hundred and sixty eight dollars and twenty one cents. And um, an adjustment, uh how do I say that? Adjustment told to me I had to make an adjustment per the skateboard of accounts, hundred and seventy three dollars and thirteen cents. And I did send you the financial reports and fund reports. Also, I gave Randy the certified payroll. And then mandatory testing, and I am gonna try to go fast. Um, we have a service, um, a free service through IPAT for um all kinds of training on there. There's video trainings, there's onsite trainings. And in our employee manual, they talk about minimum qualifications and I think we need to up that a little bit. So if our employees could complete these trainings for free, I was suggesting that we adopt five as our minimum training. And of course I had help from the IPAT people, but one is slip, trip and fall prevention, fire extinguishers, bloodborne pathogens, ten hour OSHA and.
Ergonomic.
Thank you.
Ergonomic OSHA.
Um, and require the employees to complete those programs. Like I said, they're free, they, they will have to spend some time doing it, whether they do it on the clock or you're, I, I just think that we need to start getting a minimum training done.
Rainy day.
And there's, I can add you as a user, any of you guys can go on there, there are probably three hundred training.
Yeah, if, for, especially for Connor, it would probably be good, I mean it would, would be a lot, it'd be at least probably a thirty or maybe even more hours devoted to it, but he probably needs to have his nineteen ten general industry at some point.
Okay.
Because of all the chemicals, processes, everything he's handling, it's not gonna hurt a bit to get him trained on it.
And I think some of these are go at your own pace, I'm not sure if that one is, but some of them are.
I'm gonna put um.
I mean for the premium, we only pay like six grand a year for, that's a lot to come, a lot of nice perks to come with it right there.
Put the police department in reserves on it too.
Um, I didn't talk to Brian about it because I know they have minimum training that they have to do. We just don't have anything in our employee manual that outlines what training they need to have.
Yeah.
Like I stayed away from things that he's learning at the alliance, like Connor's doing confined spaces, um. I, I try to stay away from all of that and go toward things that they don't offer that I think they need to have just to work here. In the utility side.
Yeah.
Alright, and if you guys can put a vote to that, if you approve it, I will get them all signed up and send it to their email and then they can do it at their own pace. I don't know what kind of timeframe you wanna give. Um, because I didn't go in and see the length of all of them.
Didn't the employees have safety training? Pay for it pretty much, it's free.
Yeah, and we've already paid for it.
Yeah. Need a motion to. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that, but as far as the time limit, I'd.
So.
I'd be.
We could say reasonable and if somebody's just not doing it, we can come to you and tell you. Like, like what, you're right, Connor's in school, so he's already doing homework and classes. I, I can come back with hours and stuff if you want, how many hours it takes to complete each one.
Yeah.
But go ahead and add it for now. Okay.
Yeah, you don't wanna say, have them done in a month and then.
And I just wanted to let the coun, uh, council know I am preparing town insurance quotes for twenty twenty six, so you're gonna have that at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Um, it's been two years, it's time to do it. Also wanted to do a shout out to Connor, I think I sent you his homework and his grades in school. Um, he did so well, they gave us a grant for a thousand dollars toward his tuition. A grant that we weren't even supposed to be eligible for, so that was, came as a surprise to us. And they, it also made him qualify for a stipend, so he's gonna get a check for five thousand dollars. In his pocket.
Good job.
I mean, I was no scholar in school, but that was the first time I saw where the instructor said it doesn't get much better than that.
Yeah. Um, money market. How much permission do I need um from them to invest our money for a riverboat um and money market? And I'll just tell you what I'm thinking.
Well, you're not allowed to invest in anything that carries risk of loss.
Okay, this does not carry risk of loss. I um, I've been talking to other, you know, we're trying to generate revenue somehow, it's not a ton of revenue, but right now we make zero point zero five percent interest in our riverboat account and we have over two hundred thousand dollars in it. I would like to move a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a CD for six months where I can get four point oh five percent. Um, the account that it's in is called the now account, so the on, the minimum balance is only eight hundred. So we're well above that, we're gonna leave fifty thousand in there. Um, and then the money market, the current rate, we're getting zero point one five percent. So I want to change our money market to another mon, money market at three point seven five percent. So it's moving the money, but you're not moving the money. Or it's still gonna be in the same bank, it's just gonna, one's gonna be in a certificate of deposit and one is gonna, that money ma, uh, market will close and they will transfer it to the new money market. So I'm asking permission to do that. And I want fifteen hundred dollars for office chairs, please. For the board chairs here, these are all broken.
Still got one I gotta.
Yeah.
Arguably, that's actually a little bit.
Which is safer.
That's what she was talking about.
Can get double your FDIC insurance coverage by having different kinds of accounts in the same institution.
I didn't know that.
So, yeah.
We'd sell the same amount, Jesus.
Right. And the chance of the bank going under is minimal.
Don't get me started on bankers.
Make in what, how much time?
What's your return on six months?
Four point oh five percent.
Six thousand seven.
That's annual.
Yeah, annual and then you divide it by, in half, cause it's six months, right?
Most accurate way is to take the whole year and divide by three sixty five and multiply it by the number of days.
Ah.
So how much are you wanting to put in there?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand? For, we're getting, you would be getting four point oh five?
Yes.
So it'd be six thousand seventy five dollars for a whole year. Be sixteen sixty four per day. So for example, if you had it in there for a hundred and eighty days, that would be two thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars and eighty nine cents.
And then I'd like to do it again. We'll find what the next highest rate money, a CD is. I think we need to, that stagnant money, that money market, we actually have to go take a dollar out and put a dollar back in every year, cause it just sits there and it's making nothing.
What are the chances of needing to spend that money sometime in the next six months?
Well, that's why I didn't recommend doing anything except moving the money market to another money market, we have over a hundred thousand in there.
Right, but I'm just saying if you have, that's the other problem with a CD is, you don't keep it in full time, you get a penalty.
Well, we have rainy day, we're getting ready to start a new year. And there's al, always additional appropriations if we needed timber early, right?
That's true.
I just don't wanna keep making zero point zero five percent on something I know we can be pulling in over four percent on.
I agree.
Just out of curiosity, what are the fines, if you would have to?
There's a percentage fine, I, I don't know those details, I didn't ask. I didn't think this would be a question when I told you zero point zero five to four point oh five, I thought you guys were just gonna say yes.
Yeah.
I didn't even figure out the profit. So if you want me to find out more, I will.
You know.
Do we want the money to sit there and rot or do we want it to grow a little bit?
We want it to grow.
Grow baby, grow. I'll make a motion to uh improve moving the money.
Second.
Thank you. And then these chairs right here you're sitting in, we'd like to replace them. I tried all day to go shopping because I meant to put this on last month too. Anywhere between seventy eight and a hundred and twenty dollars a piece, so right around fifteen hundred, I would like you to approve for new, to replace these broken chairs. And that would come from part from my office supplies and part from other supplies.
Do we wanna try to go a little, Eli Lilly again, not, not Lilly, but um.
R C C F.
Yeah, uh, uh, base fill, that's where these came from.
Suggest before spending the money, this is the kind of thing.
Isn't that how you got these shares?
That, that, those, they came in for free, but I'm saying there's also, could also apply for a grant. How much is it gonna cost total?
I was guessing fifteen for the highest possible.
There are certain.
Chairs that you can wipe down, these are cloth.
Okay, there are certain kinds of funds within, there are certain kinds of piles of money within the community foundation that are designated for doing things like taking care of little tasks in the, in the little towns. I'd say before you spend fifteen hundred bucks, it's worth at least asking if there's something like that just laying around.
I think, I think we should do it, Tommy said, and have a fisherman write money for it. I just, I have a lot going on, if someone wants to help write that.
The, the grant, the, the, the process of asking for that would be like five minutes long.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh.
Of just asking if there's anything like that laying around.
Okay.
Cause I think there is.
Okay.
If you don't ask, the answer is always.
And I don't need the chairs, paying their money there to be.
God, I understand now what you're saying.
So can we approve it? Have her at first to try to get the money from the community foundation and if they don't have it, okay, it's okay for her to get them? Yes or no? Or do we just wait till?
It's up to you guys. I was just doing, I mean, the money's already been budgeted for in o, office and other supplies, so.
Okay.
But I didn't wanna go replace all your chairs without telling you or asking you.
If you're gonna get rid of this chair, I want it.
Isn't that the one that broke on when you were sitting in it?
It feels great.
Okay.
It's broken in now.
I will save that chair for you. It's alright, I'll, I'll look around for, for funds.
Okay.
Alright. We only have eighteen open projects, what's one more?
It's a, it's a five minute phone call, he said.
I'm just teasing.
I am too.
Making fun. On all purposes.
That completes the clerk, we're on to old business. Uh, first item is job descriptions for property and utility.
What did you think of them? I sent them, I, well, I, I gave them to you in the meeting before as well. Yeah, it was part of the packet. Or do I give them just to Randy?
No, I read through them.
I did not have a chance at the work. I was pressed for time tonight, so.
Well, I covered my bases by saying anything that's added by the supervisor or the town council.
How many were there, two or three?
Two.
Two.
Property and utility.
I didn't get to see them, so.
I emailed them to you.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, yeah.
Well, it's not a pressing issue, you guys could table it. I can send them to you individually again if you want.
Okay.
I mean, they're already doing the jobs, it's just a matter of getting part of record.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Most of it's description of pay benefits and procedures, the biggest thing we need to, if we wanna tune on any, it's just a description of what they're gonna do while they're here.
And we might wanna consider adding that mandatory minimum training too.
Safety training now. And you kinda cover that and.
Training.
Oh, it just details reimbursement for training. You can look at that if you want.
You're gonna need an animation.
We wanna.
We're tabling this?
We wanna table this till next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. We'll find to.
Make a motion, table.
Second.
This is your big debut here.
Next item is local tax options.
Well, I, I don't know how much time you're gonna spend on this, and as Gary Norman alluded to earlier, they, the way that the local income tax works has totally changed. And I know we talked about it a little bit last time. And I looked into it much more deeply and it's actually pretty simple for us because there's a provision in the local income tax law that if your, if your municipality has fewer than three thousand five hundred residents, you can't impose your own local income tax. Uh, to make a long story short, counties can do it for their own costs. Uh, up to one point seven percent and there's three different categories for what they can spend the money on, what a, some part of it goes to like fire departments and libraries and so forth. A big piece that goes into their general fund, a third part goes to things like ec, economic development, okay? The uh, on top of what they can charge, they can pass what's called a municipal local income tax for all of the little towns. And they can choose to impose it in any amount up to one point two percent on top of their own tax, okay? Um, only the county can do it. And when, if and when they do it, they have to distribute a quarter of what is collected back to the little towns, divided up according to population of the town. Very much like the edit tax and the public safety thing is done now. The joker in that deck is you say, what happens if there are three quarters that they collect? Uh, the statute says that the county can keep it and, and use it for governmental purposes, okay? Or they can distribute all or part of that seventy five percent to the town as well. So there's really three things that the town can do and should, and should get ready to do, I suppose. And the third one won't matter unless the first to work. This is something that, that the county would need to pass next year to take effect in twenty twenty seven. So one of the things that we can do and perhaps ought to do is request the county council to implement a local, a municipal local income tax, okay? And then, if they do, we should then request from them, please don't keep the seventy five percent of it, please hand it out.
Send it out.
Okay. And then if they pass it, are, what we will have to do each year before July first each year is pass a resolution asking them to give us our portion. And then we're allowed to spend it on basically any valid government purpose. Okay, that's it in a nutshell, if you wanna know more details, we can go more deeply.
So our only option at this point is do we wanna ask them to implement a tax for us with the intent of them distributing the whole seventy five percent and us getting our share based on our population?
Yep.
Of said tax. Clear? Understood, good.
So what if other towns don't do this?
We don't wanna raise any more taxes, do we?
Well, if other towns don't do what?
Ask for that percentage.
Then the county will either not pass the tax at all or will just keep what they collect. Then the county will either not pass the tax at all or will just keep what they collect.
Okay.
So, you're only gonna get, the max you're gonna get is?
One point two percent.
One point, seventy-five percent of one point two percent based on your population.
The maximum you can get is all one point two percent.
So, if they so choose to distribute it, but they, they're entitled to their twenty-five percent.
No, they're, they're entitled to seventy-five percent.
Sorry, I got that one back.
And they only have to give us a quarter of what they collect.
Who made that rule?
The State General Assembly.
Are they gonna do that? Do you know?
That, that already was, that, what I just described to you was already passed into state law.
My state law, but I'm talking into county.
I don't know what they're gonna do.
I brought this up to John because we need to figure out some way to generate some revenue, especially for roads and streets and stormwater and endless list of needs that they have. So, I just thought we could talk about it. I don't want to pay more taxes either, but.
You can't, you can't pay.
Well, what, I'm gonna tell you right now, even with the Community Crossing Grant, you will only be able to have a project every about twelve years. And when that twelve years is up, the original street probably is gonna need this repair as well. We have to do something.
When, when are they voting on this?
No, no, and it, it, this is just, he was explaining how it works. It's nothing's been done.
Nothing's been done. All we can, all we can do if we would like to pursue it is write a letter requesting it to the county.
Great.
Does it sound like you can go talk to them about or do you have to put it in writing?
Uh, you can request to appear on their, their agenda. Just, they have meetings just like this.
Okay.
Or, and/or you can put it in writing, make a formal request. That way, either of those are formal requests. And, uh, just as individuals will talk to you about issues that are important to them within the town, it's appropriate for you individually to talk to council people at the county level about issues that are important to you.
And if anyone else.
Anybody else is allowed to talk to their county council people, too.
If there's anyone out here there that has good ideas for generating some revenue, it would be, could use the help.
So, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't request it, but I'm saying the only way for it to occur is to convince the county to do it. It is possible that the county's gonna do it anyway.
Okay. One more question and I'll be quiet. When you have a local income tax like that.
Yep.
The designation for that money, it's not like when it comes from the state. It can be designated by the council for whatever purposes they want, right?
Yeah, but there might be one or two restrictions on it.
Okay.
But you could do it for, you could, you could put it, you could fund a, uh, street department or you could put it into the utilities or you could put it into uh, pay in the fire department, you, any, any legitimate.
Okay.
You could, any legitimate purpose.
You want to go to the county council meeting with me?
I go there from time to time.
Okay, so this is being tabled for now?
Well.
Yes.
Do we want them to pursue it or do we not? That's the question on the table.
We don't want any more taxes unless we just have to. I'd kinda see what they want to do. Are they, if they're gonna do it, then we need to pursue it. If they're not gonna do it, let it lie.
But the, the question you're asking is, do we need to make a motion to start the conversation and pursue it or?
Not really.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's investigate it further.
Sure.
Yeah.
And then we'll make a decision from there.
The, 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 the next time you'll be, the first time you'll be called upon to do anything formally will be in the, before July, sometime in twenty twenty-seven before July first.
Okay.
If the tax exists at all.
Okay.
Okay.
So, more to learn.
All right.
More to learn, yes.
You're most at the table.
I'll make a motion to table.
Did table it?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Need more information. Okay.
Next, next item is three thirteen Western Avenue.
Yeah, this is also one of mine, obviously. The, uh, I didn't realize how long ago it was that we had sent the first letter to these folks. It was a year ago. And one thing led to another and we haven't taken the next step. At this point, I don't feel right about filing anything in court without sending them another notice. And so, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
And I won't let it slip through the cracks this time.
To just table or?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's surely nothing else for them.
People need a motion.
There's really nothing else for them to do. They already told me.
Just an update of status.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, thank you. Uh, next is planning and zoning permit process.
Do you want me to talk about that one, I guess?
That's all you.
Uh, at the risk of being, telling you more, you want to know? The way this process works in Indiana is, Indiana has sort of, leaving aside the city of Indianapolis, Indiana has two different ways of doing zoning. You can do it at county level or you can do it at municipal level. If, basically, if a municipality doesn't pass its own zoning code, it's part of the county. We're part of the county. It is possible, it is possible, it is possible to have some, but to still exercise some authority over building permits as opposed to zoning regulations. If you want to be able to, if you want people to have to get both a county building permit and a town building permit before they build something or modify something, we can pass an ordinance which says that. In this, in the realm of measuring twice and cutting once, I guess before I craft such a ordinance, I would like, if that's something that you want to do, I would like to know what sorts of things we want people to have to apply for. Like, for example, just when they build something new or anytime they, anytime they have a, what I call an improvement location, like that they need to get an improvement location permit if they're, if they're building a fence or building a garage or changing the out, like putting, changing the, the way the outside of their building looks. Building a pond, uh.
Don't they already have to do that, though?
They have to at the county level.
Yeah.
My question is, or what, what I was directed to do was figure out how the town can impose a building permit as well. And if that's something you want to do, who do you want to be the people that review it? And how much do you want people to have to pay? To give you some idea, mostly the other little towns that, that have such a process, like Oldenburg is the classic example. Oldenburg's a little German village. They want to make sure everything looks like a German village and they're on the National Historic Register. And so, they want to make very sure that nothing that happens in the town is gonna violate that. So, when people want to make any changes to their buildings within the town, they have to come to the town board and they have to, they have to show a picture of here's what I'm planning to do. And the town board has to sign off on it, that it's within the aesthetic of the existing town. And then people have to pay two dollars to get a town building permit. And then they take that to Brookville and get a county building permit from Franklin County. So, generally, when you're gonna have a small town building permit system, it's gonna work something like that. And so, what I think, what, if we're gonna do it at all, what are the standards? And are you guys gonna have people bring it right to the town board or somebody else gonna make these decisions? And that's what I guess I would like to know before I craft something, if I craft something.
Any other towns or county that do that?
I don't know that anybody in Ripley County does.
And second.
Obviously.
I'm not an expert on this. I don't feel like I'm qualified to tell somebody, no, you can't build that. It's unsafe. I don't know.
So, basically, what we would be gaining a stake in is we're not gonna go and exercise codes and regulations. It's basically put in front of us what you want to do and we're gonna say, okay, we're fine with that or in the case, cause it seemed like everybody got their feathers ruffled about the pond down there. And it would be like, okay, stat, you create a, a series of limitations and says, that has to be put in front of town board before you're gonna build it into town property. Or you're gonna do, do X project in the town proper.
Yeah.
And we say yes or no. And if we say yes, then they still go through and follow. There's just adding a review step in it.
That's true.
Process to, to bring anything to procurement.
I think it is important when it comes to our utilities and easements because they're there for a reason. And we have one that built right on top of one of our easements.
Yep. So, basically.
Yeah, that is a problem.
If we want to do it, uh, we need to come up with a series of definitions of. I don't, I personally, I don't think we need to get into the renovations, additions. You're free to do with your property what you want.
Exactly.
But then where do you, you gotta draw the line where if, if we were gonna put a pond in or whatever, get, got everybody ruffled up. I mean, obviously, new building.
Pond in town is an issue. Yeah.
So, so we'd have to define what an improvement is. Because if you're gonna do an improvement on your property, be a pond or a driveway or anything, how far into the rabbit hole do we go? So.
Does it, the county, don't they have their rules? And I have to get, that's why I wanted to put a.
Yeah, they still gotta go through all the rules of the county. We're just basically putting it where you have to put it in front of us before you can take it to the county.
Just feels like it's making it.
But it's also gonna delay everybody another thirty days from getting to do something because they gotta make the board meeting. And if they don't make it, then there are another thirty days till they get in front of them. So.
Do you think it's something that could go possibly through, like our marshal's office and utility? Just curious. I know that's.
Possibly, if that's something you want to, if that's a job you want to impose on the marshal and the utility people.
Cause they don't have enough to do.
Is Brian still in there? I know he had thoughts on this, on this subject.
The grand concept would be is to have somebody in town look at it, but not have to go for the whole council cause then you don't want to pull a session together to do permit review.
I don't want someone to have to wait thirty days to build something. I don't like telling people what to do with their property period, but that's just.
So, or we leave it at the county level?
Brian? I know that you had thoughts on this, this permit process about possibly having to them to, anyone who's like building or putting in a pond to have an extra step so that it's cleared by the town. So, when you notice something's wrong, you can stop it or be sure that it's being done properly.
I think you gotta come up with some type to where they don't really have to. Let's face it, if I decide I'm gonna build something tomorrow, now I gotta wait a freaking month to come in.
Yeah, I have issues with that, too. Yeah.
That's what they were just saying, but you had ideas.
If they would like, uh, Connor and myself, you know, A, not affecting any criminal laws or anything, you're where you're supposed to be. Connor says, no, you're not putting it over top of one of my water lines, my sewer or my, uh, water right away is like it's happened off of a cable. I think once, as long as it's under a certain amount. Now, if somebody goes building a house or something like that, yeah, maybe they need to come up with a town council. But decks, pole barns, sidewalks, patios, you know? If you decide you want to build a deck tomorrow, last thing you're gonna want to do is, well, you're gonna wait thirty days. But, so I think most of it, most of it, I think between Connor and myself, we should be able to approve or disapprove of it. And then, of course, keep the town council somehow or another documented to where the town council would know is, is my belief for it.
What do they have to do now?
Now, they just go down and get a permit and.
And that's coming from where? From the planning people in county?
I've talked to Mike about it. I think I did. But, uh, now, you used to, back in the day, you would go down and you would ask the zoning board to give you a permit to build something. I think Harvey, you might remember this. And then they would tell you, go up and get the town council's blessing on it. And then once you got the town council's blessing on it, they issued the permit. And somewhere along the line, the communication was dropped, probably our fault, probably some our fault, maybe some of theirs. I don't know whose fault, but it's dropped. And now, half the time, we don't even know what's going on until they start doing it. So, it was just to where a little bit better communication between us and your department down there is all I was wanting.
I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think we need to appoint somebody in here, whether it be the clerk or the marshal or the utility, that county has a permit application come in. That triggers them to send us an email. Then we can do our quick, okay, show me what you're doing. Is it over? Is it, do I, easement right away? Any of that?
The thing about it is.
We could send it back. It'd be simple.
I would be like, she needs anything else to do. But I would be comfortable with the clerk treasures, either the clerk treasurer or the office, any of the girls in the office, to be able to receive that and to be able to call Connor and call me and be like, hey, we got this, this and this. It might be something to where Connor can call me on the phone and go, Brian, they're wanting to do this. I'm good with it. And Connor calls back up here.
That's the procedure for water and sewer hookups, too. They already email us.
Cause I mean, we're basically doing it solely on town interest. We're not in there looking, again, we're not looking at code. We're not looking at setbacks. We're not, we're just saying.
We're not after your money. We just want to make sure it's done right.
I know I got a drainage here. You can't build on that. I know you got a water line here. Don't build on that.
There's a little shed back here, uh, behind your mom's, all the way up the road a little.
Ah.
Blocks the drainage.
We need that, too.
Been there for twenty freaking years.
I shook, I shook my head when they put it in.
I, I think something needs to be set to where, and if Cheryl would okay with it, maybe call the clerk treasurer's office in charge of receiving those and then making sure that me and Connor's aware of what's going on and we're like, if.
Forward it right to everybody, include maybe the president, marshal and the utility.
And then everybody knows what's going on. Cause a lot of times I'll get people that'll stop me and I'm sure Connor has. You know, hey, how the hell did they get away with this? Say this.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So, I want to make it difficult for people.
And then sometimes you feel like looking at parts where they go, what do I gotta do to build a deck on my house? Start it Saturday, finish it Sunday.
Well, technically, you're supposed to get a permit for it.
Right.
For.
County.
Only if it has a ruffle or a.
Foundation.
That's what people, that's what people do to today's age. Start on Saturday, finish it Sunday. Nobody important's seen it. You're done.
Yeah, and there's that oversight.
To where it now, if I see somebody building on Saturday, I can pull up, be like, hey, what are you doing? Building a deck? Or did you have anybody come out and make sure it's not in the right way?
Well, we can do that anyway.
But, and I'm not gonna stand here and say I haven't done that.
Send a red flag to the county.
That anyway.
Yeah.
If we see somebody building something, we can stop and say, you got permit for that?
Yeah.
Okay, we can still stop them.
But, but what do we need to, if we wanted to implement a step in the review process, do we need?
Pass an ordinance.
Pass an ordinance. Okay.
Which I would be happy to craft, but I want to, would you guys tell me what you wanted, what you wanted it basically? Or what you wanted to do?
And how far you want us to go? Like I said, if somebody's building a whole building, but still yet, and Randy, I know you're like this. You get aggravated in life because you go out and you pay your hard-earned money for your own damn property and you pay for everything. And then now you got some jack wagon trying to tell you what you can and you cannot do on it. I get it. We've all been there.
Yeah.
It's aggravating. But at the same time, so even if it's like a garage or a barn, legally, if they're not blocking Connor's department or abide by all the laws off the feet of it, here you go. Go down to the county and get your permit.
We're, we're, basically, all we're doing is saying, we're checking to make sure you're playing by the rules that are already in place. We're not installing any new rules.
Yes.
And I don't know if there would, like me and Cheryl talked about, you know, do you charge them a ten dollar fee because you gotta go, a ten or twenty dollar fee? Cause Connor's gotta take time out of his day to go over and look? I don't know. That's up to you guys.
That's Harvey.
Okay, comment?
Yep.
One thing I think about it all is we got the pay-in-street program trying to bring people back into town. This, it is trying to make more restrictions. And we already have half the town up for sale. And bring people in, more restrictions, it just, uh, red flag.
I don't see where, I'm sorry, I'm answering for you.
Yeah, we're, we're not really adding any restrictions.
I understand.
Just trying to get a chance to verify that everybody's playing by the rules.
Yeah, I'm not.
If you, if you're making them go to another, see some more people, it sure is making more restrictions, I think.
I was just trying to miss you. What kind of trouble is someone going to be in if we have to go down that alley now that there's a building on the easement? What are we going to do? Fight with them over? What kind of stop them from being built in the easement?
You can stop them. You can stop them and then.
Yeah, but we didn't stop them. And what if something happens over there and we have to take out half as?
All I'm trying to set up is where if somebody goes down to Tad or I think it was a Tad. If somebody goes down to building and planning and says, hey, I want to build a barn on my house. Okay, is town of Sunman aware of what you're doing? No. You take this up to town, let them know where you're going to build it at. Make sure you're not blocking their water runoff. Any utilities or any fire access. Bring it back down to me and I'll give you your damn.
I don't even want to have, I don't even want to have them do that. I want them to go to Tad and then have Tad kick it to us and say, check this out and give me your okay. And for $2, we say, you, you did it, or you know, whatever it is. And then we say, we're okay.
And it would work.
Proceed.
Ted could damn near call Cheryl and be like, hold on a minute.
Yeah, we're, I'm not, we don't need to be driving back and forth and wasting people for thirty days.
I know six homes and a church that stays wet because of that one shed put on that waterway.
Let's just get where we have a say in the process. So we can say, we know where our stuff is. Let me help you out.
And I agree, Harvey, I agree a hundred percent. We need businesses and stuff like that, but we also want to make sure it's done right. But.
Now, it's also about protecting.
Yeah, I just want a little bit better communication with the permit. That's all I was asking.
I'm calling. I mean, it's not like it's happening. It's in the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, Randy. It's as quick as getting ahold of Cheryl. Hey, I got this guy down here. He's wanting to do this, this or this. I'm going to fire you an email right away. She's allowed to be able to pick the phone up and call. I don't even have to be in it. My most important thing is the waterway. That's the most important thing. I don't even have to be involved. He's allowed to go out and be like, yeah, we're good, Brian. Ain't nothing here. I.
Yeah, I mean, we got maps. We know where the drainage is are. We know where the easement.
Ted should know that Ted's smart enough to know the laws from the borders and all that crap.
And at the very least, the email will let him know what's going on and then they have eyes on it.
Quick, quick check with a tape measure. Yeah, you're good to go. Or move it three feet. Problem solved.
Need more to do, but it could save us stuff.
You don't have to charge.
No.
We just ask town to check with us.
Have to charge it for you though.
Yeah. So do we want him to draft an ordinance for review?
And you want it to, I think what I'm hearing is you want it to be pretty bare bones.
Agreed.
Directing or requesting the, the. County zoning officials to contact the town. When, when an application is made.
Yep.
We can write an ordinance telling the county what to do?
No.
Okay, okay.
Asking.
I'm like.
We're requesting.
And that's what I guess I was going to say, like, what are you, are you, maybe you don't know, are you of the opinion that Mr. Brinson will. Cheerfully go along with this or, or not?
He said he was. He just needed you to request.
Okay.
He told me it was a good idea.
Okay, so could it? Okay.
I think it helps him out a little bit. Because that's like over this pond, he got lit up over it because we're telling everybody, we don't have nothing to do with zoning, call Tad. So now it's like, no, we do have something to do with it. So now if somebody complains, it's like, well. Randy, our employees, okay, this.
So we don't really need an ordinance? We just need a letter?
I mean, again, there's, there's a thousand eyeballs on one set of legs is looking at it.
Especially.
You know what I mean? You can't be everywhere. So it's like, let, let us help you out.
And especially, and I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but especially if you want to charge a fee, definitely need an ordinance.
I don't want to charge a fee for that.
I don't want to answer in an email.
So do we want to pursue an ordinance, terms to be discussed? Or do we?
Bare bones?
Do we want to pass on it? That's where we're at.
I don't want to charge.
I'm not going to, I'm not in favor of it. You just said more stuff.
If it's just a matter of Ted communicating with us, I'm okay with that. I, I just don't want to. Delay somebody from on the porch or, you know. Just don't want to make, make it difficult for someone to do improvements on their house. That's. It's overreach. I don't like that.
I mean, there's a time between when somebody submits their plans for additional whatever. Ted just don't instantly look at it and sign off. You're good.
Yeah.
So there's still time there that while he's looking at that, he can call and just note that.
We're just, we're, all we're doing by doing this is giving ourselves a chance to say, hold on a second. We need to verify it.
Make sure.
For a hundred dollars. Just kidding. I'm getting her going.
For a hundred pennies, maybe.
I don't even want to charge them that.
No.
Fair enough.
Email. If it's just an afford email or something.
Well, the question is, if you're going to have the town employees spending time reviewing this. What's that worth? Is it worth charging anything?
It's a service that we should provide.
The answer is yes. Maybe the answer is no. Just saying, but they're. It will certainly not. It will certainly not cost the town zero to do this.
Yeah.
But it's also something we can pursue it and then we can.
Sure.
We can amend the ordinance if we.
Sure.
If we, if we get a hundred permits in the first month, we'll have to talk to somebody.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, if it gets out of hand, we can revisit it.
You can motion him just to draft one. It doesn't mean you're adopting it.
Just, yeah, just draft one up and let's look at.
Before I brought one in, I wanted to make sure this is something you wanted to do at all. And if so, kind of how stringent.
Okay.
Because, because there's going to be, eventually somebody's going to try to do something that we're going to say, no, you can't do that.
Yeah.
And then they're going to try to challenge us on it. So. Eventually that is going to happen.
Of course, probably tomorrow, the way our luck is.
But if we don't have the ability to defend ourselves, we don't ever get to defend ourselves either.
Ah, yeah, okay. All right, draft it up.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to ask John to draft it up.
Nope.
I'll second. Next item is, uh, annexation community meeting.
We're just wanting a couple of dates from you guys where you'd be willing to talk.
Keep in mind though, that the statute provides that when you're going to have these meetings, we have to be able to present exactly what we're going to do. And the timeline for providing town services. So.
All right.
If there's any, if there's still any areas that we're thinking of that don't already have town services. Before we have this meeting, we develop a plan for how long's it going to take to get the sewer and the water and the police protection. Run to this area.
Yeah, I just, I think we got to put more restrictions on them, but go ahead.
On annexation restrictions?
I'll put them at seven.
Um, can we start with Edgewood Lane? They're all desiring to be annexed.
To what?
Yeah, but we still have to have this plan. So.
Yeah, we're talking about that annexation.
But I guess that's. Yeah, I mean, but, but I mean, but if you're asking, can it be so, you're saying you want it to now be maybe a two tiered process? You're going to next these people this first and then maybe later an eximole?
I don't know.
Are you trying to do it all at once?
I would like to do, well, we had chose on the map. Of the area in which we sent the letters to.
Sure.
You did send those letters out?
Oh, yeah. We only had about four responses by email that had concerns about current ordinances and what it would, how it would affect them on their, like their larger. Pieces of property.
Sure.
Um, but otherwise I haven't heard anything else. But we said in the letter that we would have a meeting and maybe just sit around and talk about these ordinances and. And about their concerns and have that conversation. And we sent that letter last year, so.
You can. I'm just saying, but if, if you're, if it's going to be, if, if, if it's going to be part of the actual annexation process, if this is going to count. As one of the public, is one of the informational meetings that you have to have. When you're annexing somebody, the plan has to be done before you have the meeting.
Okay, okay.
That's all I was saying. Don't, don't, don't try to have a meeting next Monday.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
We sent a letter out, right?
Yes.
Asked them, did we get any responses back? They didn't.
We only had, we had four responses via email that with concerns about our ordinances, the way they were right now. I looked up some of those ordinances and they're from like nineteen seventy-five and eighty-five and.
Cause it's old, doesn't make it bad.
No, no, it doesn't. But. One conversation we had was like burning or hunting on the land. That concerned one. I can see having to have a barrel and a screen if you live in a.
There is an open.
A quarter of an acre.
We've got a burning ordinance. So.
So that.
The short answer, the short answer for all those folks is if they're brought in, the ordinances apply to them just like they apply to anybody else.
Yeah, but is there a possibility the council would entertain changing some of those ordinances and updating them?
It's up to them.
That's the conversations we were interested in having.
Also, the changes apply to everybody.
So you couldn't say if you're on five acres plus, it's different for you as far as burning and.
Are you guys going to carry a map, a plat map to be able to gauge? It's four point nine 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 acres or five point zero zero one acre?
I like to be involved in this meeting because I'm kind of on John's side. I mean, you can't say yeah for one and no for the other. You know, it's unfair.
What's fair is fair.
Well, I mean, what, what rules apply when, whether you can have one head of cattle or twenty? They make rules for that based on acreage, don't they?
The state does.
So I can have a cow?
Most, most municipalities say you can't have farm animals in town at all.
You can have all of the ones you want.
I didn't know we were allowed to have chickens in town.
But we are.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Town security. Just kidding.
No poultry livestock of any kind in my neighborhood.
Well.
That's true.
There's homeowners.
At the very least, Edgewood Lane would like to be annexed into town. The residents there would like to be annexed into town. And we provide all the services to them. If we don't want to go after this big one, I get it, but.
So basically what. What you're saying is, is not a formal meeting, just kind of a town hall discussion of. Let's gauge your interest to see how far we want to push it.
Because they weren't saying they weren't interested in, they had concerns about, yeah.
And I don't blame them.
The conversations actually went ten times better than I ever could have imagined.
What, what other area did you consider?
Um, I, we have a map back there in the room. I can show you. But we have sixty-two utility customers that we serve. Um, most of them water and wastewater. There's a handful of just water only and a few just wastewater only. Um, that don't pay taxes to Sunman. Um, County Line Road, all our customers there, they can't get our rumpkey service. Because they're not in the town proper. So they're forced to pay like almost a hundred dollars every three months for the trash. Where if they were in town, they only had to pay nineteen a month. Um, we tried to get rumpkey to service them just because they were our customers, but they won't even do it because they're not in the town.
So what are?
That's how the conversations got started anyway.
So what are services? Water, wastewater, sanitation. Coverage from police. Everybody's already covered by fire and the MS, right? Okay.
And then it goes over that loophole of some of those County Line Road or Dearborn County. But Batesville's in two different counties too, isn't it?
Yeah, that's not.
Franklin and Ripley.
Yeah.
You know, Dearborn County Council, they get, you know, they got one of the letters from us too. They're, they, and they've already said. You know, don't start a process without giving us your plan. So.
I'll work on that plan.
So we need to finalize the plan and then.
You said a timeline and a plan?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the law.
In a town hall.
Before you give an ex anybody.
Cause I don't know that.
Before you annex anybody, you have to. Have that.
You have to have it before you have your official meetings.
Yes.
Okay. We done with that one?
Think so.
Okay, on to the next one. It's Halloween candy purchase.
I'm for it.
And I would say, if you want me to go give a grant, I'm going to kill you. Every year, we spend like two hundred from utilities, two hundred from general fund out of other supplies. And we set up the utility truck with the lights on over on Keeble. We've been doing it for what, three or four years now? We hand out candy on behalf of the town. Okay, we'd like, what, we'd like $400. I think that's plenty. It's expensive now. It's hard to get that much for 400, but we will.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You make a motion.
Thank you.
Candy.
Candy.
All right, new business. That closes out old business. We're on a new business. I have requests for inclusion in Sunmer, Sunman.
Sewer.
Sewer expansion project.
Here's the letter since you don't have it. John read it.
I do?
The, yeah, okay. I thought that was in the form of a question.
Is this a plaza?
Um, no, yeah, that is, um. Is it my ladies? My ladies and the chiropractor.
Okay.
So. Should I explain the phase one and phase two? First property.
Let him read the letter.
I read it earlier.
Okay, what do you need to explain?
Um.
What?
He's laying things over there.
No, I'm still.
No, she was asking what I wanted to explain. That his property was in the ready two. So we had ready, application for ready, the original.
We received a grant from the original ready program to do the sewer extension. We tried to get us another grant from ready two to extend the sewer even farther. Had we succeeded in giving that grant, this property would have been included in the service area. However, we were not successful in getting that grant. And this gentleman, as I interpret this letter, the gentleman is saying, what would it take for me to get hooked on to the Sunman's sewer anyway?
So by looks of it, the first thing he's going to need is a couple easements.
Possibly. It depends on whether he's, whether he can put his line in the public right away. As we did for a lot, as we did for a lot of it, uh, Highway 101. And I, whether he can or he can't, I'm just not sure.
Yeah.
Who is Jim?
But that would be.
Does he have?
So it is.
What business? Who is he?
Say that. I couldn't hear you.
Business is Jim.
The plaza there at Penn Town.
With the chiropractor.
By the church.
I know what you mean. Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know that was.
And so, so it's possible that he might have to get an easement from somebody. And or depending on how it's situated, maybe he doesn't. And then, uh. Basically, we can choose. To allow people that are within reach of the sewer to tap into it. Anybody that wants, anybody that's in the service area can pay at the tap in fee. And as long as they can reach their sewer line to our main, they can join in. So the, the short answer. Uh, of what's it take for me to hook onto the sewer would be. Extend your sewer lateral to our main and pay the tap in fee.
And, and they will need the grinder pump.
Sure.
The low pressure system.
Sure.
The pump to be able to pump it into.
Sure.
The sewer.
That's all, yeah.
If we could, if you guys are in, so we could provide the detail, we could have, get the Curry from, or the details from the police and Vanderbrink, i.e. Curry about. What their preferred system is that they want. Basically like a, Harvey, you can detail us too a little bit, but it's basically a fiberglass grinder pump that would collect.
The line that's being used right now is a two valve.
Yep.
So the question, to me, the question would be, how many can you allow to hook onto that? So the question, to me, the question would be, how many can you allow to hook onto that till it has to go to the six inch?
That's a, that's a question.
Just so you keep that in mind.
For Lori. But yeah, she can do a calculation on gallons and figure out.
Yeah.
When, when we would have to go to the other line. But any, anybody who goes on the two inch now can be on the two inch for till, cause if the two inch will handle it now, handle it then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. The gentleman is here.
Okay.
Mr. Schwab.
Oh, okay. Hi.
Yeah, we'd like to hook into that. If possible. Septic system we use is a, um, forty years old.
Mr. Schwab, have, have, have you done any looking in terms of. Of whether or not. How long your lateral would have to be to get into the town main, have you, have you done any of that kind of looking or anything like that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just didn't know, or have you, do you happen to know, and by the same token. Do, have you looked at things like from where you want to, where you want it to come off of your property, would you be within the right of way or, or? Anything like that, and maybe, again, maybe the answer is, yeah, that, that to fi, to figure out if it's even, before you figure out if it's even possible.
I saw a couple of Leikens and they said.
Okay.
Up to you guys. They have spaces they wanna talk about much.
Okay. Well, th- as these guys have said, the answer boils down to, do you wanna? Pay to get there and do we have excess capacity? I strongly suspect that we do. Based on the way it was built and it was built to have a few, have more people attached to it.
Would be the advantage of the county to, I guess, the property values increase and that's the, actually would be increased, which should get the sewage charge.
Which way would we go though, would it go through the church?
Well, if they can go the right of way, they would have to wrap the corner and stay in the right of way, if they can get an easement from their neighbor to cross their land. Then they could do that.
The church.
Which would be the church and the first house because they crossed the road.
That's right, there's a house.
Right by their driveway. Um, one thing I think we could, we should do is we, we offered what, a two or a three year window for waiving the tap fee for hookup?
Sure did.
I think if we're, they were willing to do that inside the window.
Is treated like, treated like would like.
Yeah. We could, I mean, we did that, we did that for everybody who we obtained an easement for that let us cross their land, we waived the tap fee for three years.
Where did the first grant stop, the first phase?
Basically, right at the. Right at the BP station, right across the highway there.
Okay, and there's a grant, the second grant was unsuccessful, does that get re-entered or?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Is that ready two?
If our two of the, didn't quite make it, or does that?
If a program like that comes around again, then the project is in the pipeline.
That was an annual asking?
Oh, oh, oh. Um. There's. There's a program that was funded two years ago. By federal infrastructure dollars that were passed out to Indiana, Indiana decided to hand it out to various regions around the state. And then the regions decided what infrastructure projects to fund. Our region decided, sure, we'll give some of the money to Sunman to extend the sewer. This year, there weren't any federal. Funds that came to the state, but state decided to have a smaller program anyway. Our region got less money. And so. It's harder to qualify. Will this project, will this program exist next year? Good question.
Don't they eventually wanna run the sewer out to the expressway?
I mean, probably a long-term goal, yeah.
Yeah, cause I had a dream that a buckies went up there.
I actually can answer that question, so there was a manual put there specifically for possible growth in the future. But it would be whatever move, whoever moved there would be their responsibility to hook in, they're at their cost. With of course approved engineering stuff and all the loops you have to go through anyway. But that's at their cost and then the approval of, of course, the town council.
Yeah, and, and everybody was hooking into it, it's all done at their cost, we just waived the tap fee for anybody for the, for, it was three years, right?
Yeah.
So especially the people that gave us an easement, so that's what brought that about, but we'd be willing to extend that to you.
Okay, thank you. Well, what's my next step?
Um.
I can give him Jill's phone number.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we make, why don't we? I'm ninety-nine and a half percent sure that we wouldn't have any problem with capacity. But we probably should check that with Jill Curry.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the sewer's put in for more people to.
Right.
Tap on to eventually.
Right.
I'm intrigued on that.
That's what I'm saying. No, that's what I said, I, I, I. That it wouldn't be.
He'd be responsible to run the pipe from his location to, to tap on the main. I, I guess that research and find yourself a contractor who can install you. We'll get you some information from Jill on your lift station, or your pump station, you don't need to put it in, then find your contractor to do it.
If you went to see Mr. Leikens and he said, I don't know, go talk to the town.
Yeah.
You, you can go back to him and say the town is making sure that we have the capacity and. We'll let you know when we find out that answer with one hundred percent certainty. And then you could, you know, tell him to proceed or.
Make a deal with him.
Information on that letter.
Okay, so the next step is.
Yes.
Yeah. Sure, so I know.
Yep.
Yep.
Or if you wanna use somebody else. Other than. You're free to use, you wanna contract with whoever you want to.
And no more, no, nobody knows more than he does.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who's Jill?
She's the engineer record on the project.
Okay.
Jill Curry.
All right.
Her, pass on her contact info.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that, first off, just go ahead and send an email for, just to get the capacity at a hundred percent and then we'll go from there and I'll reach out.
Okay.
All right.
We're good.
Thank you.
Okay. You'd like to do something fun now?
Okay, the next item is the twenty twenty-five summon recycling art project finalists.
This is fun, but it's always hard.
Yeah, so the, the gifts went, or the prizes went up, we're now giving prizes for first, second and third place. The utility staff narrowed it down from I think forty-eight or forty-nine entries down to six. And then these go to the town council to choose first, second and third out of them. Um, first place is gonna get a hundred fifty dollar gift card from Sunman Community Market.
Ooh.
A T-shirt featuring their design from Kosovo Workwear and a, a big art basket, like a hundred fifty dollar art basket from FCN Bank. Second and third place will each receive a T-shirt with their design on it from Kosovo Workwear and fifty dollar gift card each from Sunman Community Market, so. Here we go.
Here we go.
See what the spread is.
Let's lay a little mile out.
And this, um, this grant money is made possible by Solid Waste, it's southeastern Indiana Solid Waste District.
Was, was there a goal for them to?
It's about recycling.
Recycling, okay.
Hang on, I got, there we go.
Okay, so.
It's cute.
Very good, they're all good.
They're all gracious.
Yeah, because it's the brain, oh, this.
Let me pick out three.
Very wordy.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night. It's all this. It's earth.
Oh.
Continent.
Yeah, before you go to a contractor, you're gonna want that email that confirms the pass.
My favorite too.
Yeah, I can get that email for fun.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, thanks for coming.
Are there any, are there any you don't like, you're not in love with?
That's how we did it.
Process of elimination.
This one's a little wordy, it's like he's a little bit dizzy.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a bad look. If you have, if you have, uh.
This one's typos. One, two, three for me.
There's a number on the back of it, if you wanna.
Push one out.
Okay.
Oh, it's got the number on the back?
Yeah, you do by the number.
Okay, so my favorite is. What's on the back of that one down there by you?
Thirteen, this is thirteen.
Fourteen, forty-one. What number's on there?
Two.
Two.
This one's two. Come here. Give me a paper.
Oh, I might scribble.
And I did ask for the names ahead of time, so we'll be able to announce their names tonight, that's the winners of the contest. I never realized you were lefty.
All day, every day.
You're in the right state of mind.
Never trust left-handed people.
I did.
Yeah, let me come out.
What the heck? Fifteen. You're gonna have to do it because I can't read that handwriting. Oh, I see.
Yeah, so.
Hers was fifteen over here.
I got a one, a two and a three for that one. I got a, a one and a three for that one. And then I got a three and a two for that one, so those are our three. So we need to figure out which one's highest, got a one and a two. That's got a one and a three, so one and a two, one and a two would be your winner, cause it's got a one, two and three, so. Okay, so then. Fifteen's got a one and a three and two has a two and a three. So fifteen would be your two.
Okay.
And two, number two.
But he's doing this.
Would be three, here's. There's a summated result.
Okay, so which one, can we show number forty-one, our first place winner is going to be. Number forty-one is Reagan Balzana.
Yep, you, you got that right.
I did, okay, good. And second place, number fifteen.
Fifteen.
Colby Roulette. Yay, and number three is number two.
Here, that's number two.
Number two, you hold that one up.
James Winholz. Did I say that right?
Yeah, you got Winholz right.
So great, we'll be getting in touch with the printer and. And scheduling with Sarah Carr for the delivery of the nice big baskets and gifts, or the basket and givers.
There's.
They're all winners.
There's the other finalists.
They did a good job.
You all did very good kids. I doubt if there's any kids watching this, but.
Okay, that takes care of that.
Sarah probably is.
Last for new business is recommendation for the utility general labor.
I know you don't have it, we only have it on here. Randy, we are asking for like a little bit more than what we advertise just based on experience. That of course is up to you guys. Um, this gentleman, he's went through all of the interviews, several of them. And he has the recommendation of both Jason. Um, Brett, Connor, Joe, myself. And he's sitting right there and he's been sitting there for two hours.
God love him. He passed one test.
We haven't had a long meeting like this in a long time.
Have you talked to him?
I did not.
No, I didn't.
But he's right there, if you wanna ask any questions. Um, also Bob Stent is highly recommended.
Don, he's right there, ask questions.
Sitting to Mike's left.
All right.
So he went through three interviews. Poor guy. And this is what we're asking for the starting. You see that part?
Yep.
It's not a lot more, but it's a little bit more fair.
That's just the job description.
References, everything checked out good too. I'm sorry, I'm holding on. Well, somebody's been sitting here forever and today.
Gotta be able to talk to him.
We're gonna be leaving town next week.
All right. You?
Um, I'm following the advice of my operators and. I mean, for lack of a better term, I don't work with them every day, I'm not gonna work with you every day.
That's right, we appreciate you so much saying that.
I'm, I'm at the, at the point where everybody who's gonna have to work with him, I have to take their advice and their guidance and.
Exactly.
Do what's best in representation of the town, we need help, we've got a qualified applicant sitting here that's anxiously ready, ready for us to make a decision on him, so.
I will make a motion to. Higher, what was your first?
Oz Hammond, and then you have to tell me a wage too.
Okay, I'll second it.
For thirty-six five.
Is that okay, the thirty-six five, it's, it's in the salary or, it's below the salary ordinance. Well, what we were paying out, so. So that was a Carol and a Randy.
Yep.
When can you start?
He, he gives a proper notice, so.
Okay, well, I thought it said he was self-employed, that's why I was like, so you gotta give yourself two weeks' notice.
I've got a few jobs.
Yeah, he's saying he probably be done with the job, but.
And there'll be background check and all that.
Rigmarole. Yes, he already knows, he'll have a post offer, so once you approve him, then we can require him to go take a drug screen and then we will do a background check. And we'll send his licenses over to the insurance agency and we'll do all that we do.
Okay.
And he's really been a very patient person because he really has been through the wringer of interviews. And we need to say a big thank you to Bob Stent, he really gave his time as a independent professional opinion and. We appreciate all that time that he gave us.
Okay, thank you Bob. If you're watching. If not, pass it on to Bob, please.
I will.
Austin, welcome to Sunman.
Yes.
Thank you. We, well, we are the comments from the floor, so. But we're gonna cap it if you start going down a rabbit hole.
Comments from the floor?
Please don't, it's personal mine.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Say again.
Eight forty-six. You were right, Randy.
Next meeting, seven twenty, it's six thirty.
Yes, and, um, next meeting is gonna be all contract salary ordinance, it's.